Good evening, everybody. The time is six o'clock PM. Today is Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two, and I'm calling to order this meeting of the special closed session of the city of Emeryville. I'd like to begin by asking if the clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Donahue. Here. Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Welch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bowers.
Here. Thank you. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act authorized by Assembly Bill three sixty-one. The city of, the city council and the Mesa Board and the redevelopment agency must make a finding by a majority vote every thirty days that the circumstances related to the governor's state of emergency continue to exist, and that the impact on the ability of members in the public to meet safely and in person is best met by having held a video or teleconference meeting, which we are doing. We will make those findings every thirty days under the governor's state of emergency until it has been lifted or until we find that those conditions have abated. City Hall is open to the public during its regular business hours Monday through Friday, and you can visit the city's website to access information. Follow this meeting, www.Emeryville.org, and go to the council agendas and videos where you can submit an online speaker card or also access this meeting via Zoom. Members of the public who wish to comment, who have joined us by Zoom, can press star nine if they're joining by phone or use the raise hand feature on the Zoom feature bar in order to access the public comment portions meeting. Members, are there any experte communications that you wish to report for tonight's closed session meeting? Okay, seeing none. Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on tonight's agenda will be afforded one minute to do so. Any members of the public looking to speak? I see none. And Ms. Hartz, just to confirm, we did not receive any requests for comment on the closed session, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. So we'll move now to closed session. The members of the city council will be leaving this meeting and joining me in another meeting to confer on the items listed in five and six on tonight's agenda with council, and we will return to this, uh, this meeting when we've concluded that and report out on the outcome of those agenda items. So members, if you would please join me at the special close session link, and I will see you there in a moment. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The time is six forty-five PM. Today is Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two, and I would like to call to order the special city council meeting of the city council of the city of Emeryville and ask if our clerk would please take the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Here.
Councilmember Welch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Here.
And Mayor Bowers.
Here. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to exemptions to the Brown Act provided for by Assembly Bill three sixty-one. During the coronavirus pandemic, the governor has declared a state of emergency, and the city council of the city of Emeryville, the redevelopment agency and the Mesa Board are allowed to continue teleconference and video conference meetings pursuant to these exemptions, provided we make findings every thirty days that the state of emergency both exists and the necessity for the health of the safety of the public and our staff is best served by having us continue to meet remotely. We will take votes on AB three sixty-one every thirty days to continue that procedure, but City Hall is open during this time, and members of the public can access us between nine to five business hours inside City Hall. You can also join this meeting by going online to the city of Emeryville's website, going to the council agendas page and submitting a speaker card or joining us by Zoom using the link provided for in tonight's meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment during these meetings may do so by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. If you're joining us by telephone, you may press star nine, and I will call on you at the appropriate time to give comment. Comments may also be submitted electronically in advance of this meeting, and the clerk will read those comments into the record at the appropriate time. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda for tonight's special meeting.
I move approval of the agenda.
I'll second the motion to approve the agenda. A motion has been made by member Donahue and a second by Mayor Bowers to approve this agenda. Please call the role.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowers.
Aye. Item four is ex parte communications. Do any members wish to report an ex parte communication for these agenda items? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment for items not on this agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for something not on the agenda may do so now by using the raise hand feature. There will be public comment for committees when we reach those committee reports. Charity received comment for items not on the agenda for this meeting.
We did not.
A public comment is closed, and we'll move now to our special action items. Item six point one is the Budget Advisory Committee Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one and proposed priorities for calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. And I would like to welcome my friend Bill Reuter to the dais and the table to provide that update.
Can you hear me, folks?
We can't, but I need Sherry to go on mute because we're getting the feedback from Sherry.
There's a, as in, unfortunately, the recording of what you just said, John, and what the council have said is being, is coming through my screen. So I'm hearing a voice at the background.
If public comment is closed and we'll move now to our special action items. Can you mute your, can you mute your computer, Bill?
Unfortunately, now he's muted himself, I think.
Muted off. Muted off, but I'm hearing that recorded voice again.
I think it might be on a different tab, Bill. Perhaps you could try muting tabs that are not this one.
Okay, hang on just a sec. Hey, Ruth? I need to get my tech assistant here. Ruth?
So what I'd like to do is, um, I'm, I don't want to hear myself say that again. I'm going to, I'm gonna do this, Mr. Reuter. I'm gonna ask, Sherry, could you mute him, please? Okay, thanks. That's helpful. So while you're on mute, Mr. Reuter, we're gonna move you back to the attendee section of the meeting, and I'll let you and your tech assistant, hello, Ms. Major, work on that in the interim. Okay, there's no harm done. And we have approved the final agenda, so as a point of order, Madam City Attorney, do we have any issue with taking item six point two at this point? Is there any reason why I can't simply take item six point two next?
No, I've seen no reason. It's out of your discretion.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to item six point two and do that report, uh, the next two reports first, so we have some time for Mr. Reuter to address his tech issues. So item six point two is the Commission on Aging's Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one and proposed priorities for two thousand and twenty-two. And I'd like to welcome Brooke Golden.
Can you hear me?
You can, Brooke. Welcome.
Okay, awesome. Wait a second. All right. Great. So Mayor Bowers, Vice Mayor Medina, city council members. Thanks for the opportunity to present this brief report on the activities of the Commission on Aging for two thousand and twenty-one. So this is the, the mission of the Commission on Aging. Instead, uh, the commission is dedicated to promoting a dignified, helpful quality of life for older adults by advocating for vital services, providing opportunities to develop a meaningful fellowship, offering lifelong learning activities and being a accessible community resource. So you can go to the next slide. So these, this is a summary of accomplishments for the year two thousand and twenty-one. Majority of the, the year has been spent working on the AARP, these network of age-friendly communities. At this point, we're about in the third year, third to fourth year, we're finalizing a draft action plan. So in two thousand and eighteen, the city of Emeryville submitted an application to join AARP Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities in partnership with the World, World Health Organization Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities. We began our work assessing during the community assessment early two thousand and nineteen, following the the World Health Framework for a five-year planning process, which includes developing the plan, implementing the plan, and then an evaluation process. So we completed our baseline assessment in two thousand and nineteen, then the pandemic slowed the process down almost to a, to a halt. And we're just now finalizing the age-friendly draft action plan. We intend to have a final draft by the end of the fiscal year. And so the plan is organized around the six domains which are listed here. They include housing, transportation, community information, social participation and inclusion, outdoor spaces and public buildings, and community health and community support and health services. And this has been done through discussions with city departments, ad hoc meetings. Yeah, that's good. So we've collaborated with quite a few people, including Navarrocks, Valerie Bernardo, Charlie Bryant. See, the second accomplishment or what we're working on is to, I guess, to make the commission reflect the community's full range of diversity. And we've made some improvement this year. We still have one vacancy on the commission. Working on that, we also spent some time reviewing the application process for recruiting a broad range of community members in an attempt to really bring in some full representation of, of the community members in Emeryville. Okay, and then the last slide. So for two thousand and twenty-two, we're, we're going to continue working on the age-friendly cities, community, complete the work of the action plan in collaboration with the city departments. You should be able to submit it by the end of the fiscal year, hopefully. We want to increase collaboration with other cities and every little committees and commissions. We want to continue to recruit members to the Commission on Aging that reflect the demographic population of the city. In addition, we started working just recently, the last month, on recommendations to the council for website improvements to, for senior resources. And we're hoping to have a recommendation that we could send to the city council in the next one or two months. So that is this brief and glorious presentation. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Before we take questions or comments from members of the council, now is the time for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to give comment about the report from the Commission on Aging, its goals for the coming year or its accomplishments in the past year may raise the hand using the Zoom feature. And I'll call on you now. Okay, seeing no hands raised by members of the public, public comment is closed, and I'd like to begin with our council liaison, who is Member Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, that is. I have the pleasure of serving as our council liaison to the Commission on Aging, and I just want to express what a large undertaking the, the age-friendly community's work has been. It's a years-long process that's very involved on behalf of the committee, the commission, and on behalf of the staff. So I just want to thank both the commission for their work and the staff for supporting that work for going on several years at this point. At the end of it, we hope to have a complete document that showcases where Emeryville is succeeding as a community that supports people of all ages and where we can do better and give us a roadmap to see how we could support not only our seniors, but again, everyone in our community. I also wanted to commend the commission on, really, they are going through every single page of our website and finding, you know, where, where there are areas of improvement and how we can make it maybe collect everything onto a simple link for senior citizens who might be looking for resources from the city. So it's, it's a lot of work, and I, I, I think it's great that they're doing it because I know that we don't have the staff bandwidth or the department that does this work. So it's, it's really, they're really taking the user experience into account in making these recommendations. So I want to thank them for the great work they're doing this year.
Thank you, Member Martinez, for your use of services, the liaison to the Commission on Aging, and also other members who wish to comment. I'll just take the opportunity on behalf of the city council to thank all the members of the Commission on Aging and Member Martinez and the staff for the work they do on this issue. I know that four years ago, we started the AARP process for age-friendly community, and so to hear that that may be finalized in the next few months before the next fiscal year is very exciting and look forward to having that as an agenda item and welcoming the Commission on Aging to come and give comments about what their experience was like in finalizing that project on behalf of the city. So thank you, Mr. Golden, for being here this evening and for the other ways in which you serve our community as one of our community organic garden leaders as well. So thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
Of course, you're very welcome. We'll move to item six point three next, which is the Economic Development Advisory Committee Annual Report on Committee Goals, Principles, and Accomplishments for calendar year two thousand and twenty-one and the promote, proposed priorities for next year. And I'd like to welcome Mary-Lou Thierkoff. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bowers and Vice Mayor Medina. I'm Mary-Lou Thierkoff, and I'm the chair of the EDAC, and here's our annual report. Next. Just to remind you all, EDAC's goals and principles are to provide input and recommendations about city policies and priorities related to the city's economic development priorities and strategies, which we have helped develop. Next. Okay, here are our major accomplishments for two thousand and twenty-one. I'm not going to regurgitate what we did each, at each of our six meetings, as you have that summary in your packet. I'm just going to talk about one of our major focuses. And that was developing a marketing program aligned with our re-prioritized economic development strategy to take this business community forward into two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. Okay, so with our marketing program, we wanted to capitalize on the city's strengths as a center of art and innovation and then communicate those strengths to various target audiences. And we informed our marketing program with input from the business community, especially on what these strengths were and who our target audiences are. And various businesses had different target audiences, so we took all this into account. So anyway, we developed a really insightful business survey and included questions like, what is it about Emeryville? And what are the good things that happened when you moved into your new building? And what, what, what do we need to work on more at the city? And then, like, what are your current business needs? And would you ever attend a virtual networking meeting? So then, we, from there, we gathered lots of information, analyzed it, and then we conducted some business roundtable discussions. This was great. We started with the cannabis industry, and we found out that they wanted us to bring all the cannabis companies in Emeryville and the ones that want to move to Emeryville together in a networking meeting. Distributors, growers, manufacturers, et cetera. And then, uh, we met with the hotels, and we know that the hotels have just really suffered, which makes the city suffer during this time period during the pandemic. So the hotels, their major priority was bringing people into the hotels, but we had to promote an image of safety in Emeryville. And we discussed this back and forth and, and came up with an idea that we need to do that with images, not necessarily with words. The images will say this is a safe place, and I think it was our liaison, Scott Donahue, said, oh, yeah, like a image of honor kitchen and cocktails in the evening with all those twinkling lights out there, and people safely enjoying themselves and having fun. So things like that. So, um, then the direct business outreach. So after that, we, we found out a lot of, found out a lot of people wanted to contribute to our marketing plan. So we called them on the phone. We had, we created a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee for the marketing program, and we called businesses on the phone, large and small, everybody. Not everybody, but a good cross-section of everybody. And we dug deeper, and along with our other data, we were able to determine like five areas to, of messages about Emeryville. And I'll just say very quickly, there was Emeryville, a great place to work. And then people wanted us to position Emeryville retail as socially responsible purchasing option. Oh, sorry, I forgot to say next. My, you know, I guess I'm, no, we're okay. Go back. Thank you. Sorry. Okay. This isn't on there. Then they wanted us to position Emeryville as a complete community. And that's to support employee recruitment, business attraction and resident attraction. And then position Emeryville as a creative hub. The city is open to ideas, we heard. We have biotech in the art community here, but the city likes us to explore new ideas and embraces them when we come forward with them, and that was a real positive thing. There's world-changing discoveries happening in Emeryville. And these are the two I really like. It's a melting pot. It's a creative gulch for production and support companies. And Emeryville is a supportive business community because businesses support each other, and they cooperate. And then there was a competitive tax rate, and the city is helpful. It listens, and it's adapted to business needs. It's supportive of the cannabis industry and supportive of its restaurants. Next. Okay, so the other additional compliments, accomplishments are, we had a discussion of the right to recall ordinance, an introduction to and supportive center count properties and all their revitalization efforts for Bay Street. We especially love the idea of the grocery coming and grocery store coming, and I guess you guys know who it is, but we don't yet. Right? So anyway, uh, we also did a review of the Affordable Housing Bond and its administration and expenditure plan. Next. So for two thousand and twenty-two, our major priorities are the completion of the marketing program, which means we're going to start to implement it and support tourism. We're going to start with finalizing the image and messaging for Emeryville, develop a content for the web and social engagements, social media engagements. Determine the best way to create the website pages for our landing page. And then develop our social media presence in a strategy system to get our messages out about Emeryville. From our data, we realized everybody wanted us to use social media to communicate our messages and do it with images and video and great content based around our messages. And our second priority is the business incentive programs. We realize that many businesses have little capital for all those moving in costs, you know. It's very expensive for these small businesses. So we're going to explore a solutions grant program to support the reuse of existing buildings by beneficial businesses. So this will be a good priority for us. Next. Other priorities for two thousand and twenty-two, with, we're going to continue our industry-focused roundtable discussions. We were trying to get to the restaurants next. It's a very difficult thing to put together because of people's time. And we want to support the business networking events, get them back off the ground. Out, we'll start outdoors, and we're going to continue to support the affordable housing development and monitor the labor standards in Emeryville. Next.
All right.
Oh, well, I'm not finished yet. We're excited to go forward. I think there was a final, there was a final slide, Chad. We're excited to go forward and execute our priorities. And pretty soon, you're going to see that positive face or positive faces of Emeryville all over the place. And thank you so much to Scott, our loyal liaison, who has guided us and provided support and just the most creative ideas, I'd say. So thanks, Scott, and thank you, Chad, and your staff for all the work that you do for us so that we could get this thing together. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Thank you. So let me first ask if members of the public wish to comment on item six point three, the EDAC report. Okay, seeing no hands. I'd like to offer first opportunity to speak to our liaison to this committee member, Donahue.
Well, as you know, I love this committee partly because I discover new things about our community every meeting. And we do have a rather dynamic business sector in relation to our residential community, the business sector during the day is bigger than our residential community, and what the density of what's going on is very interesting. And of course, I, I would like it if we had more knowledge of some of the fabulous things that are happening. And I want to have those revealed with QR codes as you're walking along the street. People would just be amazed. Some of the businesses, of course, might not like this, but our tourists would come to the hotels, walk around, and just want to see what's behind those doors. They wouldn't actually physically get in necessarily, but they would be able to view the fabulous variety of really innovative businesses that we have. So that's my personal interest in this committee and why I think that the future looks bright for Emeryville. Because we're going to get people back in those hotels because they're going to be interested to really see what's happening here. And if any of you want to know some of the most fascinating businesses that I've found, I'd be more than happy to enumerate them.
Thank you, Member Donahue. Do other members wish to comment? I'll just say, uh, what a, what a smile I've had on my face listening to you, Mary Lou. I, I love that you continue to serve on this committee. I think you're a ball of positive energy, and I am grateful for your service. I also want to thank Member Donahue for being on this committee now for a number of years and the excitement you bring and the fact that your creative talents match so well with our, you know, our image of art and innovation. I remember giving that speech in two thousand and eighteen when we did the State of the City and the Mayor's Conference, and, and that sticks, and I love it. And I want to thank Chad Smalley for all the work he does on behalf of the businesses in our community. And Mary Lou, I'll just say that when you are finally ready to resurrect the biz neck, nexus events, which we started four years ago together, I would be very happy to join you and invite the whole council to whatever event you wish to have in the city so that we can, we can get back to normal, so to speak. So looking forward to that. You have a very ambitious work plan, but I know you guys are up to the task. So on behalf of the council members, we want to thank you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Mary Lou. So we're going to go back to our last item, which is six point one. And we're going to re-welcome Mr. Reuter, our esteemed Chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. Have we solved our tech problems, Mr. Reuter? Mr. Reuter, I would like to begin by thanking Ruth Major for serving as your technical assistant and, yeah. And just send her my best and let her know I will have, I will have a crumpet or a scone for her next time I see her as appreciation for solving that problem. So if you would, please walk us through your presentation.
We, we shall. My name's Bill Reuter. I have the privilege of chairing the Budget Advisory Committee for the city. A hard work, working group somewhat currently understaffed. We're short one member, and we can use help, of course. We advise the city on all matters pertaining to budgets, and we try to make that feedback and commentary and our, our recommendations based on as broad a reach as we can out into the community. Next slide, please. For the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one, our major accomplishments, basically a list of hard work, reviewed pension trust, quarterly investment reports, and monitored investment portfolio. That's one of our standard jobs, and we keep a close eye on that. Reviewed the two thousand and twenty-one mid-year budget amendments, and we reviewed for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two operating budget and
And we reviewed for the fiscal year 2022, operating budget, including long term financial projections. Impacted by COVID. One of the things we watch very closely always are. Projections, ideas about what's coming next down the road. Next slide, please. Next slide.
Yes.
Our primary priorities for the coming year, the calendar year. Close monitoring of city revenues, expenditures and reserve funds to ensure prudent spending. And long term fiscal responsibility. That's all pretty standard stuff, but. The attention of the group will be focused in that area. Second, to ensure prudent reserve balances. As most of you know, our reserve balances are presently robust at around 50% if we run a two year cycle. And that's good, but we also know that there are stresses and difficulties ahead. That might test our reserves. We want to try to keep them as robust as we possibly can. And here's a key one. Help folks identify new sources of revenues. That's going to be needed. Revenue from standard sources, as you know, is in a downward slope. Expenses are going up. New sources of revenue that keep us competitive with our neighbors. And yet allow us to have enough money and funds to fund a vital and progressive city. All that's a real challenge and the committee is ready to take it on. And finally, reduce the city's unfunded liabilities, mainly in pensions. This means keeping a close eye on, on PERS and their problematical operations. And of course, we have some tactics that we're already employing there that work pretty well. We try to spend down our unfunded liabilities in advance. 10,000 spent now saves tens of thousands of dollars down the road. That's tactic one. And the other one, of course, is our trust fund. We put money aside and we're hoping to make, make a little money on that trust fund. And all of that is dedicated to paying our unfunded liabilities, mainly pension liabilities down the road. Next, please. Other secondary priorities, we're going to try to. Assess carefully the impacts of the new revenue measure, measure F. We're going to monitor pension and O P E B and review funding strategies. We always review and will review budget financial policies to ensure comprehensive financial management. We're going to review mid-cycle budget, master fee schedule. Investment policy and impact of supply chain issues. That last one is an important one and we want to keep close monitoring, close eyes on it. Next slide, please. I think we're going in the wrong direction. Those are our primary priorities. Our accomplishments. I think we need to get right to the end. Let's, let me not only thank folks, but make a few comments. Another, some other things we're going to do for sure. We're going to try to maintain two key links. We try to stay in close linkage with the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And we like to keep them in touch with what the budgetary situation of the city is. That's a vital partnership, it seems to me. Between two important advisory committees for the city and we'll work to sustain that as best we can. I also like very much our work and our connections mainly through John Bowders, who's our liaison person. With the cities, the city council's own budget and governance committee. The work that they do is closely associated with the work that we do. We like to know what they're up to. We enjoy joint meetings with them. And we also like to hear reports through John, the liaison person with what the, the. Budget and Governance Committee is up to and what it's thinking. We'll work hard on that linkage. Another, here's a compliment to the finance side of the staff in the city. We're working, as you all know, with a new auditing firm. All honors to Brad Farmer and his financial staff for the extra labor which was required to put that, that new audit in, in motion. With excellent results, as usual, top ranking yet again for accuracy and completeness of Emeryville. In meeting national auditing standards. So my congratulations to the crew for that fine work. And finally, special thanks to City Manager Daniels, who's been supporting B A C's work since Farmer. For personal reasons, has not been able to do so. And as if Diane, you didn't have. Christine rather, didn't have other things to do on your, on your plate. But thanks very, very much. And that is my report.
Okay, members of the public wish to comment on item six point one, may do so now. Seeing no comments, members, if you would indulge me as the liaison to this committee, I'd like to exercise privilege and speak first. Which is to thank Mr. Reuter for many years of service to the city on numerous committees, including the Budget Advisory and E D A C Committee. I don't want to get ahead of any announcements, but. This may be the last report we receive from Mr. Reuter as our budget advisory liaison. I have. Been working with him for a number of years. I've been the liaison to this committee for six years now. And this is a very small and dedicated group of people, both the committee being five people. Actually, I believe four at the moment, four or five or more people right now and a very small staff. So Brad Farmer, Peggy Schu, Christine Daniel in particular, and some other supporting help from a couple of their departments at times. Then we have Member Martinez on the Budget and Governance Committee. It's a very small cohort of people who do. What I call the very unsexy work of making sure that we keep the city's fiscal situation in the best order possible. And we have model policies in place that are recognized by accounting and auditing firms, as well as the state auditor. For the way we have conducted our business financially and we're grateful also to the residents of the Emeryville community for supporting us and trusting us. When we do need to identify new revenue streams to keep services at the level they need to be. And all of those things funnel through this advisory committee. And their work is very critical to helping ensure that we have checks and balances in place that help us think critically about the ways in which we can keep the. The community moving with our progressive values, but balance that against our need to have pragmatic fiscal policies and solutions in place. So thank you, Mr. Reuter. Are there other members who wish to comment? Okay, no. Mr. Reuter, thank you for your report and we wish you and Ms. Major a wonderful rest of your evening. I know you will be tuning in as you always do. Members, the time is seven 19 PM and I'm adjourning this special, the special meeting. And the time is still seven 19 PM. And for the benefit of the public, I will be moving us through two very short meetings very quickly. Members, if we could do motions and roll calls to move this along, that'd be great. So we'll do quick meetings before we get to the city council meeting. Time is seven 19. I call to order the management of Emeryville Services Authority Meeting. And Madam Clerk, please note that all members are still present. I will take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Member Martinez and a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue. Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
I'm Mayor Bowders.
I are their ex parte communications to report. Okay, seeing none. Any members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda? This is the Mesa Board related to employment services. Okay, no public comment being seen. Public comment is closed. There's a consent counter, which is action minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion by Member Donahue, second by Member Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
I.
Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
And Mayor Bowders.
I, the consent calendar is approved. Members, we have one action item. Seven point one is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Management of Emeryville Services Authority. Approving the Agreement of Employment between Mesa and John Kennedy as the city attorney. And authorizing the Chair of the Board of Directors to execute this agreement on behalf of Mesa. So the only thing to present this evening is that there is a staff report. The staff report contains and its attachments contain the contract. That has been proposed to be agreed to upon tonight, which members upon you voting on it, I will execute on behalf of the Mesa Board. It outlines the terms and benefits as well as the compensation for Mr. Kennedy, who is available here tonight. Should we approve this agreement? I will give him a more formal introduction at the council meeting agenda item. So if there are no questions, I will turn to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item may do so now. Seeing none. Are there any members who wish to discuss this contract further? I would like to just begin by saying, we're going to talk about this a little more later, but I want to thank Mr. Kennedy for. Being here, we had a robust application pool of people who applied for this position. We conducted a thorough search. We interviewed multiple candidates, multiple rounds of interviews, did. A thorough vetting of Mr. Kennedy's qualifications and background. And are very pleased to offer him the position of city attorney. It would be remiss of me to not note that. Christie Crowell has stepped in and has acted as our interim city attorney and in a pinch and has been a phenomenal assistant to us. And we anticipate that she will continue to work with us in an assistant capacity. While Mr. Kennedy gets acclimated to his new role here in the city of Emeryville. He comes to us after over 25 years of service to San Francisco and in San Francisco. And so I would like to just briefly welcome him and we'll have, give him a chance to speak at the next item unless members wish to hear from him now. If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina, second by Member Donahue to approve this contract. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
I.
Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
I'm Mayor Bowders.
I, Mr. Kennedy, welcome to the Emeryville family. We will give you a more proper introduction at the regular city meeting. So that is the only action item. The time is seven twenty three. Madam Clerk, I am adjourning this meeting. Okay, the time is seven twenty three. I call to order the city of Emeryville as accessory agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please note that all members remain present. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Welch, second by Member Donahue to approve this agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
I.
Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
I.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
Mayor Bowders.
I, the agenda being approved are their ex parte communications for the redevelopment agency. Seeing none, now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the consent counter. Within the jurisdiction of the redevelopment agency may do so now. Seeing no hands raised and no comment cards having been submitted, public comment is closed. The consent counter, members, are there any items that you wish to correct or change? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Member Martinez, second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent counter. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
I.
Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
I.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
Mayor Bowders.
I, the consent calendar is approved. There are no action items. This meeting is adjourned. The time is seven twenty four. Okay, now we're here to the meeting we all are here for. Time is seven twenty four and I call to order this meeting of the city council of the city of Emeryville today is March first, 2022. Please note that all members remain present. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move this agenda be approved.
Second.
There's a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Member Martinez to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
I.
Councilmember Martinez.
I.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
I.
Mayor Bowders.
I, item four, special orders the day. I have no special orders to present to you today. I just would like to acknowledge that. March first is Women's History Month. And I, if you would recall, in 2018, we had a significant, we had a girl band. We had some awesome present courtesy of Member Martinez and her friends. We had, we had some real fun and I think it would be remiss to not note that our acting city attorney through this evening. Our city manager and our city clerk, as well as our H R director and many other people who run the city of Emeryville. Are women and Emeryville is a place where women clearly lead. A majority of our councils, women and elect more women is my comment this evening. So with that, that concludes special orders of the day. And we'll move to announcements of committee and commission vacancies, Madam Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We currently have open vacancies on the Budget Advisory Committee, Commission on Aging, Economic Development. Advisory Committee, which coincidentally, we just heard from all of them and they all pled their cases to have additional members. We also have vacancy on the Housing Committee and on the Public Art Committee. Applications are available to fill out online. They are due on Monday, April fourth. And the appointments to the seats are scheduled to be made at the council's May third meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is council member special announcements or reports on meetings in attendance. Remember, Donahue, do you have any meetings that you wish to report this evening? No, Member Welch, do you have any meetings to report? Member Martinez. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, I'm sorry, my hair was getting eaten. I attended my favorite meeting of all time. John and I have been waiting for this update for a while, so I got it.
Can we hear about the Gilman J P A? Go ahead.
I went to the Gilman J P A. A couple of things I, I learned and I'm so thrilled to report to you that Berkeley has a policy where you can't kill. Creature, subterranean critters like foals and gophers. So they've been pumping oxygen into holes in the field to push them to the exterior. Which is just, there's like a parable in there somewhere. They had to keep pumping the oxygen because they're not killing them. So they just push them and they come back. It's an ongoing war. So that's like some A plus updates. And then also because the staging, the contractor they chose. For the Gilman interchange update has a staging site really close. Like within a quarter mile, they're not going to use the parking lot for staging, which was the trade that the J P A was hoping to make. To pay for a significant amount of super lateral work. So unsurprisingly, the J P A just said that without like saying any of the economic implications. Which is that they're now like $720,000 short of doing a super lateral. So there's my update.
Does anyone have a question about Member Medina's update? Question is, how do you take yourself seriously after those meetings?
Well, agenda is in comic sands every time, guys. That just like sets the tone and we roll from there.
I, I, I just want you to know, I have a special, I have a special gift for you planned when the day comes, when you leave that board for any reason. I have, I have gifts in mind for you, for your service. So thank you. I, I don't have anything to report. I have things I could report, but I'm going to save my, my reports, I think for the March fifteenth meeting. So I have nothing else I'm going to report this evening at this time. Now is the time for the city manager's report. Madam City Manager.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't follow the Gilman Fields report, so I'll pass this evening.
Okay, Vice Mayor Medina, did you have another item?
Yeah, I did have a request that we adjourn in memoriam of Terry Sandoval this evening.
Your request will be, will be honored and we will take care of that for you. Thank you. And you do not have a city manager's report is what I understand. Okay. Well, that will move us to ex parte communications. Are there any members who wish to report an ex parte communication for anything on the agenda this evening? Member Donahue, do you have any items to report? Okay, Member Martinez, do you have any items to report? Member Welch. Vice Mayor Medina. Okay, I need to report. Item eleven point one that I've met with Doug Smith over email regarding the application for the cavalry license. I met with on behalf of the council and negotiated with John Kennedy the contract in twelve point one. And I have received emails from a number of members in the community related to item twelve point three. The resolution for the community grants. And I have received, actually on twelve point two, I received an email from Vicky Jo Soul. So those are my reports for ex parte communications. Okay, members, that moves us to item nine, which is public comment for the consent items. The consent counter items not on this agenda. So a member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on tonight's agenda. Will be afforded three minutes to do so. You can do that by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine if you're joining us by telephone. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, did we receive any electronic submitted comment for this meeting?
We do have one.
Okay, would you please read that comment into the record for a maximum time of three minutes?
Yes, I wish to comment about the Aloha roller rink shutting down. I have a lot of experience with roller rinks across the nation and also the community of color and the youth. I know how to make this rink work out to prevent situations like that, what had happened before. I have spoken in city council meetings since the early nineties. Nineteen ninety six, I helped the city of Manteca get a skate park because of my presentations at the city council meetings. This was too quick of a decision and I was there Sunday night watching what was happening and the shutdown was predictable based on my experience when I was there in May and June during the Emeryville looting night that happened. I was filming documenting. I was also robbed of my camera gear that night. I have lots of experience and perspectives on how to make things work. You all decided too quickly and not fair for Liz, who had worked hard putting in a lot to bring in a rink to our community, which we have all waited for forever. Thank you, Beto Lopez.
Okay, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed and we'll move to item ten, which is the consent counter. Any members wish to comment or pull anything from the consent calendar for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
There's a motion by Member Donahue and a second by Member Martinez to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. The consent calendar has been approved. Item eleven point one is our one public hearing for the evening. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville, authorizing the chief of police to issue an annual cavalry license to BMZ Enterprises doing businesses Rudy's Can't Fill Cafe for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty two. Members, is there any member who objects to me requesting that a waiver of presentation take place for this item? This applicant has applied before. We've had no complaints about this applicant and the application is normal in all its forms. Seeing no opposition, the presentation for this public hearing is waived. Now will be the time for the public hearing. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty two PM and I have opened the public hearing. My, my, my gavel, my dog is looking for someone at the door now. The time is seven thirty two PM and I have opened the public hearing. Members of the public who wish to comment on this application for a cavalry license may do so by using the raise hand feature. Does anybody wish to comment on this application? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is seven thirty three PM and I now close the public hearing. Public hearing haven't been closed. Members, is there any discussion on this application? Seeing none, is there a motion on this application?
Move to approve this application.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve the application for a cavalry license at Rudy's Can't Fill Cafe. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, the cavalry license application is approved. Doug, I see your hand raised. We've already opened and closed the public hearing. We're faster than the speeding bullet. We, we are quicker than a locomotive. We leave small buildings in a single bound, so your application has been approved. We look forward to having music on the patio in the near future. You will receive your license in the near future. Okay, I can't call on you, Doug, because public comment is closed on the item. Okay, item twelve point one is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville approving and consenting to an agreement of employment between the management of Emeryville Services Authority and John Kennedy, a city attorney, and authorizing the chair of the board to execute the agreement. Members, this is the same as item seven point one in our Mesa meeting. So there will be no presentation. I would just renote for the record that the contract and its terms are provided for as an attachment to the report that's available to the public that includes the benefit and compensation for the city attorney, that the city attorney was a number, was one of many applicants who applied, were qualified for this position. We conducted a robust recruitment and interview process and interviewed a number of very qualified people. We offered employment to Mr. Kennedy, who has spent over twenty five years in San Francisco, and I'm going to ask if Sherry could promote him so he can speak himself in a moment. And we entered into negotiations with him and offered him the position of city attorney. So with that, there is no presentation, but I would like to invite you, Mr. Kennedy, to introduce yourself to the rest of the council who you've met before, obviously, but the public as well.
Good evening, Mayor Bouters and members of the Emeryville City Council. I'm John Kennedy. It's, it's been a pleasure meeting you all through the interview process. And I look forward to working with you as your new city attorney. I'm sure there are going to be a lot of challenges in this new role for me, but I look forward to the opportunity. And I would cherish and really relish the opportunity to work with all of you and other members of the Emeryville City family and public going forward. And I want to thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment will be afforded three minutes to do so. Sure, did we receive any comment cards for this item?
Not for this item, no.
Okay, members, is there anybody who would like to make comments of their own? Member Martinez.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity to welcome wholeheartedly our new city attorney and thank you so much for applying and we really look forward to forming this relationship with you and getting right to work. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just seconding those comments made by Member Martinez. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy. It's nice to not be the newest person anymore.
I happily take that baton from you.
I think it's a tiara. I'm not going to lie. I'm pretty sure it's a tiara. Hopefully you'll be fine with that, too. We have now and then. Okay. Anybody else like to make a comment? No, seeing.
Looking forward to meeting you in person.
Well, I'll be, I'll be at city hall tomorrow, so.
First day is tomorrow.
Right, yes.
All right, well, we, we look forward to having you join us in city hall. I can't wait to see how, how the move in goes and as you have heard from all of us already, however, we can be of assistance to you, we we look forward to doing that and I want to thank in advance Christie again for not just the service you've provided to us in this intervening time, which was immensely helpful and necessary as we bridge this transition. But I know that you will be helping onboard Mr. Kennedy to his role and you will continue to serve our community in, in a new capacity and I just, I mean, great deal of debt to you for all you've done to assist us through this time. So thank you again, Christie, as well.
Of course. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to welcome John, myself, and just thank the council for the opportunity to serve as your interim city attorney. It's been a great month and I, you know, can only say that you have a great staff here and a great council and I've loved working with all of you and I look forward to showing John what a great opportunity this is going to be for him because I've really enjoyed my time here. So thank you again.
You're very welcome. So, Mr. Kennedy, you're welcome to hang out for our extremely expeditious meeting style. And move on. You get, you get a reprieve for one meeting and this is it. So.
Well, I can tell things move quickly.
We, they do.
This is one of the fastest public meetings that I've, I've observed so far, so it's fantastic.
We, we try to retain the time that we need for the things that need the discussion and move everything else along. We were once referred to as one of the most technocratic, efficient, yet productive city councils and we like to keep it that way. So.
They said boring, John. They said.
You know, I left, I left, I left the mean word out. We were boring, but you know what? Whatever boring governments are often the ones that get the stuff done, so that's what we do. So thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and we'll move, slide you back over to the attendee section for the rest of this meeting. And we will now. We haven't voted on this yet, so.
Need to vote.
I was just going to say, we need to vote. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll move that item.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Medina and a second by Member Donahue to approve this item. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy. We will sign that contract this evening. Okay, item twelve point two is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville, authorizing the city manager to establish a pilot program to augment the community grant program with fifty thousand dollars from the public, the art and public places fund for the visual arts grant. Okay, Amber Evans is going to present to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm here as community development coordinator and secretary to the PAC. This is an item the PAC, our Public Art Committee, wants to bring forward for your consideration. Next slide, please. Um, as back on the Public Art Committee has been in consideration of how to support local artists since the approval of the Public Art Master Plan at the twenty fifth anniversary of the Art in Public Places Program. And we just celebrated the thirtieth anniversary last year. And there, there was a lot of different discussion of different strategies for supportive local artists. And the initial strategy coming out of the Public Art Master Plan was the development of a mural program. Parallel and preceding that effort, the community grant program proceeding for not only visual arts, but educational and community events, but visual arts were included within that application process. It is some confusion and overlap with the PAC's role in selecting public art supported by city funds, particularly if the installations were on public property. Additionally, the PAC had received unsolicited proposals for visual arts and related events and lacked a method for reviewing or prioritizing those unsolicited proposals. Given that, next slide, please. Um, the PAC with, with some consideration and some uncertainty of the best method forward unanimously proposed a pilot program. And here they're recommending that using art in public places are the one percent for the arts that the city has been accumulating to fund additional applications through the existing community grant process. And having the, the qualifying organizations and artists that work with those organizations who are, are proposing visual arts with permanent or semi-permanent installation. And that's kind of a an allusion to the fact that a mural actually does come down and utility boxes, they're not going to last forever. The pilot will determine the demand and the outcomes and how to differentiate those visual art grants from other community grants. There might be community grant guidelines that get modified after this pilot on to further differentiate that if it were continued. Next slide, please. The scope of the program is to have fifty thousand dollars initially with a ten thousand dollar maximum grant as in the existing community grants. And the one, this might be one of the sticking points as it differs from the community grants is to allow applicants, if they have a distinct project element, such as if this is for the installation, if they had a community event or an activity that was educational in nature before that installation, perhaps it would be appropriate to leverage the funds and fund a one organization with both a visual art grant and the community grant. Next slide, please. Um, additionally, because these would be permanent installations, the PAC wants to see additional detail that hasn't been a part of the community grant on process, so a sketch. The concept of the installation and understanding that, as in the committee grants, insurance is required, but to make that a little more explicit. And an affidavit regarding that approval from the property owner, if it's private property, any affected tenants. Also, the PAC has talked about notification and if it's on public property to have approval from the department head of city manager, depending on the facility proposed. Next slide, please. Um, additionally, the PAC has proposed that the process run a little differently than the community grant so that they have a role within the review. And this is not dissimilar to how any commission is awarded by the city council with the PAC's review. So in this case, the subcommittee would be reviewing the initial proposals made up of the PAC, to members of the PAC, to members of the Park and Recreation Committees, Community Services to make a recommendation for awards. Here it is proposed they would then come to the PAC, who would evaluate its appropriateness for the use of the art in public places in compliance with the ordinance and the aesthetic merit. And then if recommended for a reward, that would be reviewed and awarded by the city council. Next slide, please. Um, for this schedule, assuming your approval tonight and action tonight, staff would take a body of allocation, the website and the guidelines and the application, which have already been worked up with the PAC's review and in consultation with staff from Community Services. Get that out quickly, close after six weeks. Or do I have that wrong? Two, yeah, six weeks. With applications due May first, assess that everything kind of on a quick schedule so that we can get these done before the new school year. And there is a recommendation from the PAC that after the conclusion of the pilot, if these were continued, that they would be continued with both community grants and visual arts grants issued on the school year or the fiscal year rather than at the beginning of the year. This concludes my presentation and of course I can take questions or revert to other slides if needed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we have member discussion or questions, I'd like to open this to public comment. Members of the public who would like to comment on this item will be afforded three minutes to do so. To comment, please use the raise hand feature on your Zoom bar. If you're joining us by telephone, please press star nine. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on this item? Have we received any written comments for this item, Sherry?
We have not.
Okay. Sorry, Amber, did you have a comment?
No, I do not.
Okay, so a public comment is now closed and this item went through the Public Art Committee and our liaison to the Public Art Committee is Member Welch. So I'd like to begin by offering Member Welch the opportunity to comment, provide additional insider feedback and let us know what she thinks.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Bouters. I just wanted to add, you know, this was a very robust and thoughtful conversation by the PAC and I'm in support of the pilot program in this resolution and I encourage my, my council colleagues to feel the same. And also, Amber, thank you so much for all of your work as secretary.
Thank you. Do other members of the council wish to comment or ask questions? If not, Member Welch, would you like to make a motion?
I am so moved.
I appreciate that you're moved. Would you like to move, would you like to move the item?
To motion for the approval of, to establish, for the city manager to establish a pilot program to augment the community grant program with a fifty thousand dollar from the Arts in Public Places Fund for visual arts grants.
I love that motion. Thank you so much. Thank you for humoring my, my attempt at humor, too. Is there a second to the motion? Okay, so there's a motion by Member Welch and I heard a second by Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Welch.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
I thank you to Member Welch, to Ms. Evans and to the members of the Public Art Committee. And I look forward to seeing what this process yields for us in terms of new art opportunities in our city. That will conclude item twelve point two. This moves us to item twelve point three, which is a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville, adopting the community grant subcommittee recommendations to select artists working together, Berkeley Film Foundation, Ecap Emeryville Video Project, Friends of the Golden Gate Library, Head Over Heels Athletic Arts, Kala Art Institute, New Arts Foundation, Scientific Adventures for Girls, Three Thirty Three Arts, Resilience Birthright, Inc., as the recipients for the Emeryville Community Art, Community Grant Program. And Pedro will present this item. Welcome, Pedro.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We're excited to have this community grant program back in front of you after a year postponement due to the pandemic. We opened up a call for applications in November, November first of two thousand and twenty one and received eleven applications. The current funding available is seventy three thousand five hundred. The request for the eleven applications was about ninety nine thousand. The subcommittee that entail two members of the PAC and two members of the Parks and Rec Committee met on January twenty fifth. met on January 25th, 2022 to review and discuss the applications and make a recommendation to the council of the organizations that you have on the resolution for various different amounts. I think 10 out of the 11 were recommended for funding of some sort of funding. And we have on, we've asked all the applicants to attend tonight to be able to answer questions or provide additional information for the council. If you have that, so they should be online. And I'd be happy to answer any of the questions about the process or questions that came up or providing additional information.
Okay, do members have questions before, there's, I'm sure there'll be plenty of public comment on this item. Members have questions before we go to public comment. I have a couple myself. Okay, my question, Pedro, is I noticed in the application attachment that most, not all, but most of these applicants, applicants, applicants applied for the maximum $10,000 grant. And it appears that the committee was looking for a way to guarantee funding for all of them. So only the, only one of them, which is our friends at the Golden Gate Library, who always have the $929 request for their jazz event. Other than them, nobody else received full funding. And I'm just wondering if there's, if there's a, an explanation different than the one I'm assuming about that? If it was just a goal, the goal being to give everybody some funding in this situation? Or if there were any applications that won't be able to fully function without having a maximum grant? Or if there are any that are likely to be asking us to amend this list before we go to public comment?
You pretty much, I think, are correct in that they tried to allocate funding to most of the organizations. The other one that they didn't fund one and one, they funded less than what they requested. Thirty, 333 Arts for $4,000. And, but yeah, that was their goal and intent. And they did ask most of the applicants that they were able to talk to there, if they were able to take less than most of them had said yes. Of course, they would prefer the 10,000 but, or the amount they requested, so.
Okay. All right, members, does anyone else have a question before we hear from the public? Okay, seeing none, now is the time for public comment. Any members of the public who wish to speak can use the raise hand feature and we will have three minutes of time to speak for each person. Sherry, when you're ready to start public comment, let me know.
I'm ready.
Okay, the first speaker will be Isabel Miller from the Berkeley Film Foundation.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Great, thank you. My name is Isabella Miller and I'm the Program Director of the Berkeley Film Foundation. We are a grant and educational nonprofit that exists to support the independent filmmaking community on the East Shore. I just want to take a moment, take this moment to acknowledge your generosity, the generosity of the City of Emeryville. And thank you for the partnership over the years, having been recipients of the Community Arts Grant since 2017. With this money, we've been able to pass on these grants to several successful projects by Emeryville-based filmmakers who are bringing unique, powerful and moving stories to the screen. Thanks to the support and with the help of matching, matching funds, to date, BFF has given $42,000 in grants to six filmmakers. Of these six projects, five have been completed and three have gone on to premiere at international film festivals. And one of them is going to be announced and premiere later this year. So it's very, very timely and a lot of progress has been made in the past couple of years. I'd like to just quickly name the recipients. There's just six of them. Sabira Kashi received funding for her film Home Yet Far Away. Pratiba Parmar has received funding for a film My Name is Andrea. Rick Tejada Flores received funding for Water for Life. Andres Allegria, Song for Caesar. Brett Parker received funding for Through the Windows. And Peter Lee Pan Lee received funding for Don't Be a Hero. Berkeley Film Foundation is proud to support artists in a region that really is so rich in culture, creativity and history. And the pandemic certainly made it difficult to continue and complete these projects. But they, many were saved by grant programs such as this and other ones that were available across the state and at the local level. And it really made it possible for these artists to continue their work. When a filmmaker receives a grant, they usually use it to pay other artists to collaborate with them. This includes editors, composers, sound engineers, graphic designers or camera operators. Many of these people are from the same local community, which means the grant money really does stay in the community, which helps strengthen the area as a cultural hub. I'll close just by saying that BFF's next grant cycle begins in April and we really look forward to engaging with more Emeryville filmmakers and review their work and look forward to seeing some of their terrific projects. Thank you so much for what you've done to keep this local film community alive and thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. The next person to speak will be Jessica Robinson, please. Welcome, Ms. Robinson.
Unmute and go ahead, please.
Oh, hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can, welcome.
Great, thank, good evening, everyone, and thank you for your time. I just wanted to thank you for this grant opportunity. I have been working with the Emory Unified School District for a few years now and we've been working diligently to get a more sustainable program going for the district and make it a long-term culture on campus. And this, this funding will help me secure talent and support to keep the program going and also to look for more funding and provide artistic ways for the youth to express the work that they're doing on campus and also give them opportunities to, to see other opportunities in terms of integrating the ecology as well as the arts. So I just want to thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. The next speaker will be Nancy Karp.
Go ahead, please.
She's not in the box to be speaking. There we go. Welcome, Nancy.
I'll repeat. Hi, everyone. I'm honored to be here with you all. And I'm Nancy Karp again. I'm Director of Nancy Karp and Dancers, Modern Dance Company, that's been based in Emeryville as well as myself for over 40 years. And I appreciate your consideration of our proposal to continue our program in the schools. We've been doing this dancing in the schools outreach program in the Emeryville schools, well, since the 1980s. And we're so looking forward to the opportunity to go back into Annie Yates in particular for this coming school year and get to see and greet and teach the students once again. And just want to say thank you for your time and appreciate the possibility of return funding. Thank you.
You're welcome. Last call for speakers on this item. Okay, seeing no other hands raised, Ms. Harts, have we received any written comments?
We have not.
Okay, public comment is now closed on this item and I'll turn to the council for discussion. Members, is there anybody who wishes to comment on this item? Discuss? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move approval.
Okay, a motion has been made by Member Donahue, seconded by Member Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Hi.
Councilmember Martinez.
Hi.
Councilmember Welch.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Hi.
Mayor Bowers.
I thank you to the selection committee, to the staff who worked to pull these applications and the materials together. And to all of you who are currently sitting in the attendee list, who are providers of art and other community programs and services to the youth and other members of our community. You are really critical to helping us ensure that we have a livable place where everybody is engaged and it's what helps make our city move forward. So we look forward to all these programs be, being out there. And as you do events over the year, please let the city council and the staff know when you have events that are available to the public as we all enjoy seeing the city's funds be used in a way that benefits the community. So we look forward to engaging you this coming year. Okay, that moves us to our department head reports and I would like to.
And Mayor Bowers, pardon me for interrupting. I just wanted to let you know that we do have a public comment for item E under the Planning Director's Report. So to give you that heads up and you can decide when to call.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate hearing that. So welcome, Mr. Bryant, our Community Development Director. And we will get your report and then I will hear public comment on that item before we'd have discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers and members of the city council. This is my regular monthly report on the recent actions of the Planning Commission. Their last meeting was last Thursday, February 24th. There were five, five items on the agenda as listed here on your agenda. It was a rather lengthy meeting. I will make this as brief as I can. I would note that all seven members of the commission were present. The first item was the General Plan Annual Progress Report, which is an informational report. The commission heard the presentation and then voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve this report. It is scheduled for your consideration at your next meeting on March 15th on the consent calendar and it is due to the state on April 1st. There were then two public hearings. The first was on the Emeryville Center of Innovation Master Sign Program. I would note that Vice Chair Mendez was recused on this item because Biomed is a client of her employer. The commission approved this master sign program unanimously on a vote of six to nothing with Vice Chair Mendez recused. Next was a public hearing on the Bay Street Grocery Store. This was a very lengthy and robust discussion at this public hearing. At the conclusion of which, a motion was made by Chair Keller, seconded by Commissioner Chaff to approve the application with a new condition of approval that the north ramp to the rooftop parking level be removed and that motor vehicle traffic be prohibited on Bay Street South of Aloney Way. Before the commission voted on this motion, Commissioner Simons made a substitute motion to approve the application as submitted. However, that substitute motion died for lack of a second. And therefore, the commission went back to the original motion, which passed on a vote of six to one. The no vote was Commissioner Simons, who had made the substitute motion. Next, there were two study sessions. The Emery Station Overland item was continued to the next meeting on March 24th. So they did not hold that study session. Finally, the commission held a study session on the 5850 Shell Mound Life Sciences Tower. That was again, a very lengthy discussion. The commission had seen this project before in a previous study session. So this one focused on the feasibility of residential use on the site. The applicant had commissioned an economic analysis that did conclude that a residential project in and of itself would be economically infeasible at this, at this moment in time on this site. The city hired our own consultant to peer review the applicant's study and the, the city consultant basically concurred in the applicant's conclusions on this matter. And however, the commission did give the applicant direction to consider a few residential units on the ground floor or another option to include some amenities for the neighborhood on the ground floor and to come back to the commission with those two options. I will note that this project is also slated for a study session at the city council at your next meeting on March 15th. However, since the council has never seen this project before, the, this study session that will be for you at your next meeting will cover the entire project, not just the residential feasibility portion of it. I also want to note that the two public hearing items are of course appealable. The appeal is 15 days. The appeal period is 15 days following the commission's decision. So the deadline for appeals is next Friday, March 11th at 4:00 PM. And of course, if the council wishes to appeal either of these items to yourselves, this would be your opportunity to do that. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bryant. So just to clarify for members, those are items B and C that are eligible to be appealed, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so before we have any discussion of these items, Sherry, we have one written comment. Are any members of the public here wishing to comment on the Planning Director's Report? Okay, seeing no hint, there is a comment from a member of the public, Pamela Blotner. Welcome. Please unmute and speak.
I thank you. I am talking out of turn because I, I am a, I'm an artist who, who received a tentative, okay, me and my co-artists beyond boundaries. And we were supposed to be here to ask questions or to answer questions about our proposal. And we have not been able to get in or even to see our names. And I don't want that to be held against us. It's Pamela Blotner and me, Preckler. What do you suggest we do?
So Ms. Blotner, thank you for your question. I'm going to conclude your public comment, but just advise you that we, we did take up the item and your, the recommendation of the committee, which included your application, was approved by the council on the last agenda item.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I, I'm sorry that I didn't get to be there.
That's okay. We, we understand some of the technology challenges. I just want to reassure you that all the applications that were recommended for funding in the staff report were approved by the council on the last item unanimously.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Bowers and everyone else on the council.
You're very welcome. You have a lovely evening. Okay. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on the director's report? Sherry, did we receive comments? You said we had one?
Yes, one on item E.
Okay, please go ahead.
This comes from Rod Henme. I wish to comment about the Planning Director's Report on the study session for 5850 Shell Mound Life Sciences Tower. Good evening to the city council. As an architect and resident of Christie Avenue, I wish to express my concerns and those of others regarding the proposed 5850 high-rise office building. At the recent study session, there were 11 comments made, one of which supported the project for business reasons. 10 were in opposition based on its height of more than 80%, the height of PPP with no setback and traffic of 400 cars entering and exiting at the narrow bend of Christie Avenue. I encourage the council to pay close attention to this project and to encourage the planning staff and commission to require careful urban design and traffic mitigation measures from the developer. As proposed, this is a horrible project, but if properly guided and redesigned, it can become an asset to Christie Avenue and Emeryville. Please support the neighborhood in its efforts to retain and strengthen the pedestrian green street character of Christie Avenue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Okay, seeing none, public comment is closed. Members, items A, D and E are not subject to appeal. And as was noted by the Planning Director, item E will be something we can discuss at our own study session on March 15th. So we'll just accept the comment we received and table that item. On item C, are there any members who wish to, I'm sorry, B, are there any items who wish to appeal the master sign program? Okay, seeing none on item D, members, I'd like to go first and I would just like to provide as context that this was an application that was approved. And I have been in discussion with the applicant. And at this time, I would like to recommend that the city council not exercise its privilege to appeal this item. And I'm hoping that the council will support that. Member Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you. I support the mayor's request and I know that we're moving towards finding something that'll work for an entire community here.
Okay, are there other members who wish to ask questions of the Planning Director or comment on this item? Is there any member who wishes to appeal this item? Okay, seeing none, the city council will take no action on the opportunity to appeal tonight. That will conclude the Planning Director's Report. That moves us to item 14, which is future agenda requests for council members. Does anybody have, I'll start with Member Donahue. Do you have a future agenda item to request? Okay, Member Martinez, do you have an item? Member Welch. Vice Mayor Medina. Okay, I have, my item isn't necessarily an agenda item, but we had all the community committee reports this evening. And a discussion item we've had is trying and a discussion item we've had is trying to actually align the appointments with their schedule. So we appoint folks in June, but then we ask them to develop their work plan in January and then there's a whole new group of people sometimes. And I was just wondering whether it made more sense, since council members are elected in November and seated in December, would it be better for us to use the opportunity to realign the appointment calendars to be calendar years, which match up with their work plans and also with council appointment and election times? So perhaps we could just have a discussion about that between now and June so that when we make appointments in June, if we need to either make two and a half year appointments or one and a half year appointments, things like that, so that we can realign the appointment period with the election of council members so that new councils can select people who reflect their values. I think that would be maybe something we should talk about. Is there support for having a discussion about how we might want to do this in the future so that we don't have disconnection? Okay. All right, so there was a majority support there. We had all, all fingers up across the board. So we'll do that at a time between now and June, Madam City Manager, that's convenient to staff. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 15, which is adjournment. Members, the time is 8:10 PM. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, did I miss something?
In memoriam.
I'm very sorry. Would you like to give the memoriam?
Sure. Yeah, so over this weekend, we found out that Terry Sandoval unfortunately passed. Terry Sandoval, many of you probably know as the Chair of the Alameda County Democratic Party. And she also formerly served as the Political Director for the Alameda County Labor Council. And in between that, she was Regional Policy Team with me at CIU UHW, which is how I got to know Terry. She's been involved in this community for a very long time, working on a variety of progressive causes for workers throughout the region. I think everyone in this council has at least met with her, if not worked with her in some capacity. And I think the one defining characteristic about Terry that I would like to speak to is the engaging sense of community that she, she brings to every meeting, every event. She, she makes friends. She brings people, she brought people in and she made them feel like they were part of something and that they could affect change in their communities. So, you know, I hope we can adjourn this meeting in, in her memory and try to bring some of that spirit forward and engage in our communities to make change with us.
I want to thank you for a very lovely recollection of her commitment and service to all of us. And as someone who had a personal relationship with her of a very intimate nature myself, I just want to appreciate the Vice Mayor for bringing this opportunity for us to recognize and adjourn in her memory. And so the time is 8:11 PM and we will adjourn this meeting in honor of Terry Sandoval. Thank you all for being here and you have a lovely week.